They can hear us, right?
You guys can hear us, everybody can hear us, correct?
I can.
Yes, okay.
Then I don't, I would not, simply because if they want to, if they want to talk, they can unmute them. Or send you a signal or something, otherwise we get too much feedback. And then it echoes and things like that. So, okay. We're gonna call this meeting in order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please.
Dave Campbell.
Here.
Steven DeArment.
Here.
Mark Terry. Larry Seer. Aaron Wilson.
Here.
Bill Wilson. Venus Shade.
Here.
Mr. Canary's here, he's muted currently.
Okay.
Oh, he just unmuted himself.
I'm here.
Okay, hi, Mark.
Hi.
All right, I'll push this down.
Okay, first thing we're gonna do is hearing a person's present, and Mr. Zubler is here. If you wanna come a little further up so that you can make sure that everybody hears you.
Yes, yes. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I'm, I just wanted to address counsel on the forty-five fifty-one Valley Street address. That's the old Central Hotel.
The old one, I'm sorry, Jim?
The Central Hotel, the one on the corner of Satorin Valley and East Third.
And Third, okay.
Obviously, counsel has been wrestling with this property. The condition is well documented. Just have some questions maybe. If there was a collapse in the building, who's responsible for addressing that immediately? That be the property owner, would that be the borough? Just looking at what might occur or what could occur. Just wanna, you know, keep bringing this up. I think I'm gonna be the squeaky wheel, just trying to keep our focus on that property because it is a large issue, it's a large problem.
It is.
So.
Mr. Remy, can you answer that for him? I would think that Mr. Pigman would be responsible ultimately, but it might've.
The property owner is primarily responsible.
What's that, I'm sorry?
The property owner would be primarily responsible.
And if he did nothing about it?
Well, the borough could exercise its police powers to tear that down. If the information the borough had was that it was in imminent danger of health and safety, as you know, we had our engineers look at it, and that didn't seem warranted at the time that we received our report.
Okay. Does that answer some of that?
Yes, yes, it does.
I mean, in reality, I know what you're getting at, Jim.
Mm-hmm.
But that's probably the best legal answer that we can give with it being a hypothetical situation at this point.
Understood, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Calusi, would you like to speak, or are you just here to join us?
I'm just here to join.
Okay, well, welcome. Okay, that's the only person's present, so next we have one. Our agenda is the consent agenda. If there's anything anyone would like pulled out of that consent agenda for further clarification, please say so. Anyone have anything? If not, will need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. One second.
So we have a first and a second motion, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, so moved. On our regular agenda, we have updates from the borough manager. Diana, please.
So, I have a couple of things that I didn't get on the agenda. So, the new design of the signals as part of the project on Valley Street is gonna remove the midnight flash and the signal will run normally. The signal's gonna run free to efficiently serve vehicles as they approach the intersection as a preemption. Is that okay with everyone? Is that okay with counsel?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The signals that they're putting in, they are not gonna flash like midnight and just constantly flash. They're actually gonna be running to efficiently serve the vehicles on a preemption system. So that means they're gonna go through the process of, you know, red, yellow, red, green.
It sounds like more safer.
More efficient, yes.
Yeah, because going through, going through those intersections, you don't know if cars are coming or not. So it's less to cause an accident in those intersections.
Okay, I just have to let him know, so everybody's okay with that?
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. So, PennDOT is working with the Cedar Cog Joint Rail Authority and the Juniata Valley Railroad for improvements at the Juniata Street Railroad Crossing. The improvements involve the upgrade of the warning devices and the replacement of the crossing surface which ties into the Water Street running track. During the upgrades to the warning devices, there should be only minimal traffic flow interruptions. However, during the railroad crossing surface work, there will be some alterations and some minor restrictions. The railroad contractor will be directed to maintain a half width scenario and maintain traffic flow through this area and onto Water Street. When the construction moves into the intersection of Water and Juniata Streets, there's gonna be a need to close traffic flow on Water Street at the intersection. The work is anticipated to last six days, and it's gonna require a detour mostly designated to state routes three oh oh six, one oh oh five, and three oh oh one. Construction is planned in April of two thousand twenty-one in an effort to coordinate with the South Route three, State Route, excuse me, three oh oh two resurfacing project that has the intentions of milling and resurfacing the roadway up the roadway as approaches up to the railroad crossing. Because this will require traffic restriction on the local road, Water Street, we need counsel's approval to proceed with the traffic control plan. We need a motion for that.
Second.
Any other discussion? Mark, Steven?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
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 And then I have, just a reminder for everyone to respond to the census by internet, mail, or phone so that the census field workers don't need to knock on your door. So, we need to make sure that everybody's aware of that and try to get people involved to do that part.
Everybody counts.
Yes. I did do a webinar through PSAB, and the COVID nineteen may potentially affect our state local fuels funding next year. And it possibly can affect some other intergovernmental mental revenue, such as the recycling grant, the county aid, and the pension plan that AG three eighty-five funding. PSAB is gonna keep us posted on what this will be, but it's going to, you know, so we're just seeing a little bit of it now, but it is gonna hit us later on.
Did anybody within PSAB, is there any mention of, you know, we have a stimulus program, package for citizens, for residents, for people working, people not working? I mean, is there any discussion, does anybody know of anything for small government?
I think there was something with local government, but nothing, I don't know of the whole of the details. They were only very, yeah, you know, right. But I don't know what that's going to be.
Because, I mean, we are.
On the edge.
I don't know where we're at, yes.
Financially, yeah.
The stimulus bill that's being looked at in the House is looking at those types of aid. I don't know if it's gonna go anywhere, but that's where it is.
Is that not the CARES Act?
The new one.
Right, I think it's CARES Act two, is that what it?
They had a couple names, but, yeah.
So, I wanted to make sure that counsel was aware of that. We did receive our state local fuels audit back from January's first two thousand seventeen to December thirty-first two thousand eighteen. It was included in the protective meeting documents. Everything went very well and there were no findings, so I was very happy for that. I wanted to make sure you guys were aware of it. And I also wanted to thank everyone who submitted a letter. The pool grant has been submitted, and I just wanna thank everybody who actually submitted support letters to the borough for us to use. So I need to get approval for us to write a letter of support for the detour on Dorcas Street Bridge and approval for temporary easement right of way to complete the work under the bridge. The county is planning to have some repair work done on the Dorcas Street Bridge. They're anticipating trying to get it done this summer. They're working on the bid documents, and they need to submit to PennDOT a detour plan. They already know that they can't do the work until the South Main Street Bridge is completed. Yeah. They attached a detour plan that was on the protective meeting documents for you guys' review. PennDOT is requesting a letter of support from the borough to submit with the detour. And they're also requesting that temporary easement right of way to complete the work under the bridge. They did say that they're gonna try to keep one lane open, however, they will need to close it at some point. And it has to be completed by the beginning of October. But again, that's contingent upon the South Main Street.
So that would be the detour over to the South Main Street?
Yeah. So, well, there's a couple detours here.
Right.
So, there's, you know, if you go East Water, West Water, you know, and East, well, Three East Cal you could possibly go to, but they're gonna put the detours there, West Charles, however you need to go. But we would need counsel's approval for staff to write a letter of support and to approve a temporary easement right of way for them to utilize.
I'll make a motion to authorize staff to write the letter of support. Second, Ed.
What about the temporary easement?
Yeah, and, and, let me, do I need to officially retract that motion?
No.
Okay, so the motion is to authorize staff to write the letter of support and approval for the temporary easement right of way to move through them to complete their work on the bridge.
One second, Ed.
Any other discussion on that?
No.
All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, so, the reason I put this on is we received an invoice for the two thousand twenty Rescue E one vehicle that city purchased. This replaces the two thousand Rescue truck. I did talk to Tony Willard, and he said he did remove the old truck. So the invoice is twenty-four ninety-two. And with the removal of the old truck from the fleet policy, that will give a deduction of five hundred and seventeen dollars. So the total amount due is one thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Now, at, in two thousand eighteen, at prior council meetings, we did talk about this. They, they approved a resolution which stated that the Borough Council acknowledges City Hook and Ladder's purchase of the two thousand nineteen Rescue E one. The Borough Council may, but is not obligated, to allocate twenty-two-five of funding annually to the City Hook and Ladder, and the Borough Council is not and will not be held financially responsible payment for the loan itself. And then we also discussed it in November, too. But there was no discussion, I mean, I'm asking if counsel wants to approve paying this bill, or are we going to go ahead?
The bill is for insurance, correct?
Correct.
And we ensure everybody else is, correct?
We do, but we did not authorize, we didn't authorize initially the, the, we weren't gonna be financially responsible.
But I took that to mean we weren't gonna be financially responsible for the loan.
Right.
Right. I think that's splitting hairs, honestly.
Okay.
I don't know how everybody else feels about it, and that's why we're here to discuss it.
Yes, yes.
But if we ensure every other vehicle for all the other fire companies, we have to do that for this one as well. And this is less, right, we're getting a reduction.
Well, it's gonna be more because of the two thousand, but you are getting reduction because they, you know, went in.
We took one off, we're putting this one on.
Actually, there should have been two taken off, actually, in total. Because they sold.
The old Rescue.
Yeah, but they had sold, they sold a piece of apparatus prior to that as well.
Isn't the chief one?
Chief, can you go ahead and go over that?
Yeah. Do we have two removed, or just the one?
Two, the tower truck and the previous truck.
Rescue.
So maybe you need to get with this gentleman again and find out why the tower truck wasn't removed before we agree to pay the bill?
Well, I would have to, I mean, I'll double check, but then it would wait another month.
Well, we agree to pay contingent upon verifying that.
That's fine with me, but I just don't want us to pay something until we verify why the other one wasn't there because that should be even more of a reduction then.
Well, what year was that tower truck?
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four?
Yes.
Okay, so I would need counsel's motion to approve payment.
I'll make the motion, so I'll put it in. I'll second.
Based, based upon what we find out.
So we have a first and a second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
You guys good? Mark, Steven?
Aye, yeah.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'm here shaking my head at you, but you guys can't see me. So, the next item I have is approval for permission to use Kish Street as part of the detour for the Jacks Bridge replacement project. So, PennDOT would like to request permission to use Kish Street as part of the detour for the Jacks Bridge replacement project on State Route two oh oh four, which is back meet in Road. If this, if approved, this would alleviate a conflict with the South Main Street Bridge replacement detour at the intersection of South Main Street and Charles. The detour for the state route is expected to be in place for approximately four months. It was scheduled to be implemented on April the first, however, it was deferred with the COVID. They're gonna let us know, they would like to start it if counsel approves it. It was on your protective meeting documents, but I would need counsel's approval to go ahead and allow them to do that.
I'll make that motion.
Second, Ed.
We have a first and a second, any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
The next thing I have, a request was made from the Lumina Center for four no parking meter bags on May the fifth. And they requested the fees to be waived. I granted the meter bags and said that I would request through counsel for approval. If counsel does not wish to ratify this, I will obviously pay the eight dollars. It was to hand out school lunches for the kids.
I'll pay the eight dollars.
No, I said I would, so.
I'll pay halfway.
Okay.
And we don't have to worry about counsel.
Who puts the bags on the meters?
Yeah, exactly. But every dollar counts right now, Steven, so I'll chip in four.
And I always have to go through counsel.
I do, you do.
Okay, discussion on the property along the river. So, we had our, we did discuss this briefly in the prior meetings.
You're talking about the Crest from the East Water Treatment Plant, the one there?
The camping, yes. Eads located the PennDOT roadway plans from nineteen sixty-three. It is fairly apparent that the campers are currently located on the borough property. Eads' recommendation would be to send a cease and desist letter to the neighboring property owner who we believe is occupying leasing space for the campers. If they do argue or disagree, then they would need to provide a documentation or a survey that they own the property. I would need counsel's approval if that's what counsel wished to do.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean.
If they're, if we know they're on our property, we can't be responsible till as soon as that gets.
And the thing is, I mean, with that, how long has this been going on? And what, if anything, do we do about?
For these two years.
Oh, it's been longer than that, Mark.
So what, if anything, do we do about that?
I'd say one step at a time with this. Let's get them to cease and desist first and then move forward with anything.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to send a cease and desist order to the nearby property owner.
Okay.
One second.
We have a second here, any other discussion?
Venus.
Yes.
You said they got some drawings, are they gonna provide you with a field survey indicating this?
Well, it said that they located the original PennDOT roadway plans, which gives general information regarding the location of the boundary lines impacted by the new roadway back in sixty-three. It does outline the borough property locations in relationship to the neighbors, but it does not provide a concrete location of the upstream and downstream property lines between the neighbors. He also reviewed with the surveyor through Eads, and he relayed that a lot of times PennDOT would show the property lines in enough detail to locate the road and obtain the right of way. However, it was not usually exact and was not verified in the field. The mapping does provide the general location of the property boundaries, but it should be verified prior to establishing them out in the field. They did review this with the survey department. There would be a cost, obviously, to estimate if we were to get it surveyed in between, anywhere from five thousand to seven thousand dollars. But he also stated that it's fairly apparent that the campers are currently located on borough property.
Well, my recommendation remains to get a survey done before you undertake this, but... Why are you rocking that about, Mr. Remy? Because, well, it might be apparent to Eads or to the borough that this is not on, you know, that this is borough property. It might not be apparent to the, to the property owner that's perhaps encroaching. And without a survey, we really don't have any proof that we are correct.
How much is the survey, Diana?
Anywhere from five thousand to seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I understand that.
And I'm saying, if he, if he has a survey that actually legitimately proved that this is, that that is his property, that would spare us the expense of having to deal with it.
Correct, that's what, yes, that's what Eads is saying. If we would send him a cease and desist, then it would mean one now.
I mean, this, this, if it is to be proved towards our property owner, this is just proof of property. Because if it is borough property, we're ultimately responsible for what's on it. If it's actually his, then the cease and desist, this goes away, he can prove that. And I'm assuming if he's got campers parked on it, he very potentially has proof that he owns it.
Well, I mean, surveying can be, can get somewhat complicated, and I've certainly been involved in a lot of situations where people had competing surveys as to what, where a property line might be, so.
Sure, can I go to the other side?
I'm sorry. I would say I would be more comfortable having a survey in hand prior to moving forward. I think it's the, the, the best, the best practice in this situation.
Yeah, we'll have to retract that. We have to retract the other motion in a second if you guys change your mind. But I'm not saying you have to change your mind, I'm just putting that out there for you. You know, this is, what do you wanna do?
That's money spent upfront, and, I mean, it's likely that we have to do it anyway, but.
What's the downside to sending the letter, Mr. Remy?
Well, I guess just the downside would be we really don't know that we're right. We just think we're probably right.
But, I mean, we have multiple.
But if wrong, then we just have to do, we have to do the survey, right?
Right, it's gonna be done at some point, one point or another, Steven.
I mean, we have at least two documents.
It's a natural thing, if we're naked. I mean, if we're, if we're, if we're right, we don't have to do anything. But if we're wrong, then we have to do the survey, which we would have to do initially anyway, right? Does that put us in the same position, or does that put us, or is there some other?
I just think before you send a cease and desist letter, you should know for sure that you are correct.
I mean, we have two documents, a side of a survey stating a property owner.
I don't, I don't disagree with what you're saying, Mr. Remy, but if he, if he's parking things there, he obviously, and his, for some reason, he can prove or he thinks that he owns that, and he can provide the borough proof that he in fact own it, I just don't see whether any damage done by submitting the cease and desist, the desist. I mean, this is, I mean, surely, I hope, Mr. Sellers, he doesn't take our actions as being hostile, but I mean, if it was his property, he would do, I would hope to think he would do the same thing to the borough, make us show them that we do in fact own it. I mean, if he already has that data, there's no doubt about spending the money, it's my thought. But if he doesn't own it, then I say, or he's not sure, then I say, yeah, we'll, we'll set up the money then to get a, a survey done. That's just my thought.
Well, we have a first and a second, and we're aware of what the situation is, so we need to decide what you wanna do, or what we want to do. Wanna take a vote, we'll take a vote?
I agree with, uh... No, one second.
How about we just did, all those in favor of sending a cease and desist letter, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nobody opposed?
All right, thank you. So, I need to also get an approval for the municipal building upgrade. So, last year, we had discussions were had with the Finance Committee on Security of the Municipal Building. The Eads Group did some projected costs, however, the Finance Committee decided to not move forward with that. So, and I know Dave Campbell was involved in them, and he can give some insight on it. What I'm requesting to get done is to get counsel's approval to move forward with the purchase of the stainless steel door and the ballistic rated windows. And the cost would be estimated nine thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars for the material. And, um, the cost would be estimated nine thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars for the materials, and our guys would do the work. Now, this is for in the refuse office. So when you go in, um, when we open, we're gonna have to have something to separate the employees from the public. Um, and I know, don't know if you, you know, when you go into the post office or other places, they have shields up. Well, I was trying to think about, um, more or less killing two birds with one stone, so to speak.
And looking at the future.
Yeah, and looking at the future also, and since we've already spent over four thousand dollars on engineering fees, I would like council's approval to move forward. Now, I did get council's approval before to apply for a grant. Um, and the grant is only, it's like around five thousand dollars, but I can still apply for that to maybe offset the cost. I don't know if we'll get it or not, but if not, it would be looking at nine thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars, and that's with our guys doing the work.
What do we need the stainless steel door for?
Well, that would be for people to go in, let our employees go in and out. So if you go into.
There's a door there now currently, right?
No. If you go into the refuse sewer office, the, the whole thing would be done with, uh, Ken, Kenwood?
Campbell.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dave.
It essentially, it, it contains a threat.
There's a door on the, there's a door in the refuse office.
Yeah, but as soon as you go in, the girls are right there. It's all open. So that would be like a wall there and have the two teller windows there, and then have the door there. So if anybody comes in, they would be protected, you know, security wise.
Yeah, it would contain the threat if there is one.
Right, right.
And I know, um, for now, the codes does have a, um, because that used to be the police, uh, that, yeah, window there. So I know that is a bulletproof window there. Now, it's not very big and you can't utilize it very well, but we can look at that in the future. But I'm just was trying to, you know, um, seeing as we are with the COVID, and if I can maybe even get some cost reimbursed, doing something to, to help that out.
That's a lot of money. Is there any motions that we can at least discuss it?
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll... Make the motion that we approve the, the refuse office upgrade.
One second.
Okay, so we have a first and a second to make this mo, to, to approve this. What are yours, though, Steve and and Mark?
What, what would be the cost of that?
Nine thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars. Be under ten thousand, but we will be doing the work ourself. The three main, uh, big costs are the stainless steel door and the two ballistic rated windows.
I did look around for days and days and days for a better pricing on windows, and I've been darned, I just, I, yeah, I had contacts through a securities course that I had taken years ago, and even he said if you can get them at that price, do it on deck. So I couldn't find anything in matter of.
So, I mean, my question is, what are we, what are we protecting from?
Well, it's initially thought to be for security purposes, you know, in case someone, like an active shooter or something of that come in. That was the original engineering process. Uh, but we're also, the, the thought that, you know, the girls in that office or the employees in that office sit rather close together at this point. So in the future, when we open to the public again, we need to have them far enough apart that we don't have anything that separates them.
Or from the public.
Or from the public. We don't have anything to protect them from the public.
See, initially, a year or so ago, this started out as, or maybe longer, a conversation on security of the building in general. And then that kind of got dwindled down to a discussion of would she, where do we actually exchange the most money or physical cash, um, on a daily basis? Well, that became the revenue, or the, I'm sorry, the refuse office. Well, six, one half dozen the other. So the discussion then went to just protecting the girls in there from an active shooter situation, an attempted theft situation, try to contain the threat so nobody could be hurt and the money could be taken, et cetera. The other side of it now is that we're into this COVID-nineteen situation, and when we open back up for business as usual, we're gonna have to have, my understanding anyway, is that we're gonna have to have some type of partition built in there um, under what is it, D C D regulations?
CDC.
CDC regulations to separate our employees from the public, you know, to give them that, that reasonable distance. So if we did this, it would take care of that, which is a temporary thing, obviously. It would take care of the security issue, which was the everlasting issue. And because of this being within the COVID timeframe, there may be other funding to assist with it if we move forward with it at this point. That, that's kind of it in, in a nutshell, I believe.
Makes sense, Stephen?
Yeah, I mean, it, it makes perfect sense, and I'm all for security, and obviously I want to protect everybody, but.
It's a lot of money.
I'm talking about ninety-two hundred dollars.
Right.
And we've already spent.
I mean, we're talking about ninety-two hundred dollars at a time where you just told me that eight bucks is an issue.
Uh, well, it, well, every dollar counts is what I meant to say there, but I agree, Stephen. I'm not so certain that, I mean, I would be better to put partitions up so that we protect the employees from the public and from one another. But I'm not so convinced that we need to spend ninety-one hundred dollars, ninety-two hundred dollars at this point in the game.
Well, I know we, we've already spent four thousand five hundred fifty-three dollars on the engineer to give us all the information.
But that's on the whole building, and that's on every security issue, correct?
That was for the codes and the refuse.
Right. And we can use those later when we have money, monies to, to purchase and make those, but I don't know. I just. Ninety-two dollars.
Now, sort of a bad time, we have employees laid off.
Agreed.
I see sheches just have like a sheet of plexiglass in front of their cashiers for social misfits or whenever they're exchanging money or credit card transactions, which would be a relatively inexpensive temporary fix. And maybe think about the security aspect.
In the future.
But we're out of this crisis.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't disagree. Other, in, in the meantime, Diana, maybe... I mean, is there a way that we can zero in on a potential grant or, or get more information to see if, if.
Well, I know.
What that level possibly is.
Well, I know the USDA had, um, a grant out for any security wise for the building. But I didn't go that route because I need to have more actual what we're gonna do. Because we went to finance and went back and forth to see what we were gonna do. So I need to have actuals what we're gonna do, and then I can apply for the grant. I can't, can't just say, well, hey, we wanna do some security at the building. So I need more specifics of where and everything like that.
But don't you have that from the engineering?
Well, we went back and forth. We talked about, uh, actually with the engineer, he did with the refuse sewer office. He did a whole line, and then he did another area so that the girls could go out. He did an actual thing at the beginning of the.
Right.
Okay, so this sounds like a discussion that we need to have in person so that everybody can see the plans that would be laid out and make an agreement upon that, right? Because I, I don't think Mark and Stephen and Aaron are aware of what those plans were.
Right, but, and, and I think that all those plans kind of went by the wayside then after we really dug into it. Hence, then we just move forward focusing on the refuse office. But now, though, we have an idea of what we would want to do there.
Right, so we need to address that later. So for now, I think we just need to address the issue of protecting the employees from the public and from one another during this, uh, COVID-nineteen issue. Could do it, do we have a price on what a plastic partition would be? Was that included in any of this?
No, I can, I can look it up, get, you know.
Are you guys comfortable with that, Mark and Stephen?
Yeah, I, yeah, I'd be more comfortable with that for now.
Okay, so I need you guys to rescind your motions.
I rescind.
Rescind your second.
He rescinds his second.
My second.
I'll rescind the original motion.
Okay.
I can't read the motion, sorry.
I don't really read the motions.
Uh, Dave Campbell made the first motion, then Aaron.
Okay, great, then you did that correctly.
Um, the next thing is, um, due to layoffs, salary employee went to part-time. Under the wage and salary resolution, it does not allow for approving vacation or sick time at a part-time rate, except for the community center coordinator. Um, and same goes for holiday. And I would like council's approval to allow the employee to approve part-time hours based upon his vacation and sick and the holiday. Um, because it's not his fault and his own, so.
One second.
Yeah, I second, or.
Okay, that's good. Uh, all those, any other discussion? All those in favor of allowing the wage and salary or part-time employee to approve vacation, sick time, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And holiday, I'm sorry, yes, part-time. Right, okay, yep, okay.
Um, I'd like council's approval to bid out the Cheston Street project for phase three. They want to start on July thirteenth. Um, they're going to only do a hundred and sixty feet instead of the whole length, which is gonna save costs. We were actually, we put in, I believe, the budget to do all of it, so it's gonna be actually cheaper. They're gonna continue with it in different phases next year and the following year.
Oh, goodness. So we have to deal with the potholes and the ditches and the Grand Canyon and the road there yet another year or two.
Yeah, because they're doing it different phases. And I don't know if it's due to money, financially, that they're, you know, doing that, but, um, I know.
They're probably gonna save the E R, Dave, as far as monies. So how, we're hu- hundred and sixty feet?
Yeah, I would need council's approval to bid it out because, um, so since we're using state legal fuel money, even if it's under the threshold, we're also doing other projects, like the South Brown Street and stuff. So what they're gonna do is it's a cumulative total, and so we can't utilize state legal fuel money unless we bid this project out also.
Make a motion to bid out phase three of the Cheston Street project.
One second.
We have a first and a second here. Any other discussion?
No. No.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, so when I did a webinar with P S A B on April the twenty-second, and under section seven-five-oh-one of the P A statutes, um, the governing body of a political subdivision may authorize the mayor or other chief executive officer to declare a local disaster emergency subject to ratification by the governing body. We've done that. But the declaration shall not be continued or renewed for a period in excess of seven days. So with that being said, the, the, we, well, the governing body has to do the resolution and enact it. Um, so that's what the resolution, uh, two thousand twenty dash twenty states. It's states through a proclamation of the disaster emergency. Um, it states everything that the mayor's did. However, it's for the borough, you know, it's for the governing body to do. Do you need any more information on that?
Good with that.
State the mayor to make an emergency declaration for seven days. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
Correct, and then we have to do it.
This is gonna help us apply for P M A. Um, that's why I did the webinar, um, so we do need to pass it so that we can apply for that also.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, Diana, since I took a look at it, I think it, it'll get to go.
Okay, sorry.
Make a motion and we move forward with the declaration of emergency for the borough of Lewiston by resolution.
One second.
Any other discussion?
Now, well, I forget the timeframe. Is this a thirty-day basis or just when we come back and?
Um, well, I've, it's on here as, um, until the declaration is lifted, so. But the governing body has to do it and can extend it to, uh, you know, has the power. No, ordinance, ordinance.
Ordinance. All those in favor of passing the resolution, emergency declaration, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, well, that's good, because this next one is just some discussion. Yep, keep going.
So, um, due to the COVID, we won't be opening the pool up on the Labor Day weekend, or, I'm sorry, Memorial Day weekend. The streets crew have cleaned it, however, they haven't filled it with the water, because once we fill it with the water, we have to use the chlorine to keep it clean, and, um, and it's gonna cost a lot of money for the chlorine. So obviously, we haven't done that. Um, and we're trying to keep the geese away, so that's why we've been rubbing the su, uh, running this, the pump to pump out the rainwater. So there is gonna be some costs already associated with the pool. Um, it takes three weeks to fill the pool, um, to get everything up and working. Um, so right now, we depend upon, obviously, if we go from red to yellow or green or whatever, um, it's gonna be at least till July if we can open it all. Um, so I'm just letting you know. Um, do you guys want to discuss that anymore?
I'm not all for saying at this point that we are not going to open the pool. I think that we really need to just kind of play this by ear, but we all know that even when we go to yellow, the parameters there are that we can't have more than a group of twenty-five. Uh, so, I mean, I guess we just kind of have to wait and see.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think we do have a power to open the pool.
I hate, yeah, I hate to say. Correct.
Yeah, I, I, I just play the game pretty well, you know.
Okay.
And if it's only allowed ten people in at a time, put it more at a time, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. I think we just gotta wait and see. Because we do have to look at what, what's it gonna cost us to have, you know, lifeguards and the chemicals and everything that's needed versus the, the population or the patrons that would come. Um, now, I would be hopeful that maybe it would be more since Burnham Pool is not open this summer.
Yeah, that's my thought.
But I understand where, why they made the call that they made as well, uh, so.
Right.
But I say we visit this in June and see where we are.
I mean, I'm fine with that. I think realistically, we're, we're looking at the pool loses money anyway, generally.
Correct, correct.
And, so, but I'm, I'm fine with, let's just go into a holding pattern if it's, you know.
Right, eventually, we might get to the point where we have to say it's just not gonna open, or it's gonna open, so we'll go from there.
Yeah, I'm fine with just kind of holding it on the shelf for a month and see where we are then.
Great. Um, anybody else? Are we getting before? Do you want to discuss anymore? Um, the next one is the suspension of the mailing fees extension and violations. So in March, council approved to allow residents to pay the refuse sewer bills online through the mail or leave them in a drop box, and that we would, um, mail their tags to them with suspending the mailing fees. And it was from March, it was March the nineteenth, I believe, when it was enacted, until the end of May. Does the cost of.
I thought it was until the declaration was lifted.
Until the end of May, till the end of May.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I double-checked it. That was, that was other things that we did, but it was till the end of May. So, um, what I'm asking is, does council want to continue that for the month of June at least?
I think we do.
I think we have to continue it until we are permitted to open up to the public again.
Okay, so I need a motion.
It's like I said before, I think that our role is to do whatever we can do to lessen the burden on our citizens during this.
Correct.
I'll make a motion.
So far, the cost for the mailing of the fee, or tags has been, um, over fifteen hundred dollars, just so you know.
One second.
Motion.
Well, it's the right thing to do, guys. Remember that. It's.
So I'm gonna lie and have people pick it up.
Any other discussion?
Sixty.
Will the, is the motion until June or until the, the emergency declaration is over?
Aaron, you made the motion.
All right, I should, here.
Yeah, that's okay. Do you want it to be until the end of June or until the emergency declaration is lifted?
Well, based off, we're planning by here, so it'd be until the declaration is lifted.
You willing to second that one as well, Stephen?
Yeah.
Okay, it is until the declaration is lifted, Stephen.
Thank you.
This thing's gonna happen very quickly.
Right, absolutely. Any other discussion on that?
None.
Okay, all those in favor of continuing the suspension of mailing fees extensions and violations until the emergency declaration has been lifted, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Um, also, council, now, council did suspend code violation for ten days after the declaration of emergency was lifted.
Okay, that's awesome.
Yeah, now, um, my question is, um, do, since the construction was allowed to reopen, people are on unemployment, they're at home, and they're making more, um, things, you know, doing more construction. Do you want to rescind that and start doing violations? things, you know, doing more construction, do you wanna rescind that and start doing violations? Or do you wanna continue with the?
Was I, was I under the wrong impression thinking that um we had somebody sort of acting as code?
He is, we do have somebody acting as codes, but he's only sending out courtesy notices, so if they don't do it, um then they're, they can't do, we, um we can send out courtesy notices for them to.
I mean, I, I would almost kinda say maybe, to, to play on your point, yes, you know, the, the construction industry is starting to open and people will receive unemployment. Maybe we do rescind it, but we play, you know, every situation is unique, if this is a violation that they cannot resolve because of this crisis, well then by all means, you know.
Okay, but just to play devil's advocate to that, if you come to my door and say that I need to do something, and I say, and I, and I know that it's, well, if I have COVID situations, you're gonna let it go, everybody's gonna say, I can't do that because of COVID nineteen or whatever it might be.
No, I mean like,
You know what I mean?
you know, it, it's paint, I mean, say, say it's paint, Lowe's is open, you can go get paint.
I can't afford to go get paint, cause I'm not working, Dave.
What about the garb-
I'm just playing devil's advocate here.
What about garbage? People can always pick up garbage, there shouldn't be any reason for people to have garbage out if there's a violation for garbage.
Or, or are I weak, or are I?
Why can't we violate them? High weeds, if, uh now unless they're grass or the mowers, but garbage, we both, you know, we have arms and
Yeah. Yeah.
Dave's too, you know, and we.
Well, what do I do with my garbage? I'm just playing devil's advocate, I, I mean, I hear what you're saying, uh but I, I don't think it's an accurate statement to say that now people are getting unemployment, I don't know that everyone's getting unemployment at this point yet.
Oh, agreed, agreed, yeah.
Right.
I don't know if everyone can afford to do things.
So. But, okay, so I, point taken as far as the paint, you know, because I, I myself, I have not had income throughout all of this, I've been living off of savings.
Right.
Until, you know, just roughly two weeks ago. So, I, I get, you know, your point, I, I agree with something like painting, but you're right, weeds, grass, picking up garbage, I mean, that's, that's a little bit different to that yet.
There should be no reason. And I, I'm not saying it's not, I just, you know, laying all the parameters out there, all the factors that, to take into consideration.
Right, right, I understand.
I mean, and you're right, uh you know, the the dump is open now, so there's no excuses that if that was your route of getting rid of your trash, that you can't. Uh so, I mean, but how do you pick and choose which codes? Can you pick and choose which codes?
That would be a part of my question.
Or do we let it up to the codes enforcement officer to?
Mark. And Mark, does that open us up to illegal liability then?
The enforcement officer always has
Discussion?
A form of prosecutorial discretion to go after the code violations that that person deems to be moved forward.
Okay.
Okay, so then do.
What about making s- something as well, if it's, if it's something that we can do on our own and versus um something that would need a contractor or would need more of a professional?
I don't know if you can say even on your own, because, you know, it, it, just because, you know, it doesn't require a contractor, or it doesn't mean someone couldn't do it on their own.
So, what about rescinding it and we, it, it, it can be its, its staff's discretion type of thing.
Yeah, it could, I, 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 I'd be fine with that, as long as we make Mister, the, the codes enforcement officer aware of, you know.
You know, so let's not, back to the painting thing, and, and you're right, you know, so maybe we don't cite on that, you know, say it's, it's discussion number three.
We're always gonna send courtesy notes first.
Right, absolutely, absolutely.
Yes, yes, we're definitely gonna send.
But I'm, you know, I'm saying we're, we're to the point of citing for something like that, maybe we don't.
Right.
But, you know, your, your weeds are eleven inches tall, then maybe we move forward with something like that.
Right. Yeah, I, I was disagreeing to begin with, I'm just playing devil's advocate.
I, I know.
Did you guys hear that discussion?
I did, I like the idea of giving the, the discretion to staff one of them.
Okay, good.
While we move forward and while we don't, I don't like the outright suspension of everything. Right.
Okay, then we need a motion, right?
So. So the motion would be to rescind the previous?
To rescind the suspension of.
Code force.
Yeah, yep.
I'll make the motion to rescind.
Okay, now, Mark Remy, is there anything that we have to do, like do certain people have to do it, or is it okay if just?
I think that your ordinance, uh the, or a manager I know can do it, so, you know, as per a manager could find any type of enforcement to this.
Okay.
So, what with allowing it, s- discretion can we put as in the same motion as um rescinding our previous motion that?
We don't need to put that in, we just need to rescind the previous.
Yeah, beyond that, it would just be direction to staff.
For the.
Okay, I wasn't quite sure.
Nope.
I'll second that motion to rescind our
Suspension.
suspension of code enforcement violations.
You guys hear that motion to suspend?
Right.
Okay, to rescind, okay. Any other discussion?
None.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
What's the matter, Mayor? Well, you're probably muted, uh what number are you? Okay. Yeah, you have to unmute yourself, but I don't have your name, are you caller number two, three, or five? Cause you didn't put your name in when you submitted it, so um I would need to know what yeah, yeah, yes, but your name, so like whenever you um came on board, you could have had the opportunity to put your name in. Um so it didn't, it didn't register you, are you still on the, the uh?
Call.
Okay. But I don't know which one you are, are you caller number two, three, or five? I can try to unmute them and see which one. This would be on the initial call, so let me un, let me unmute it, and then you can, um, okay, so caller two. Can you, can you?
I did, Lucas.
Okay, that's Lucas Parks, okay? Okay, so you're not caller two, caller three. Deb, speak. Nope, that's not you apparently. Okay, caller five, go ahead, now speak. That's you, you're caller number five, okay, Mayor, okay.
We got that figured out, great.
Okay, I'm gonna hang up now, okay, Mayor? Okay, all right, bye.
Techno, techno, technology, technology.
Okay, can you speak up, Mayor, say something? Mayor? She just, she just hung up.
Okay, well, she'll call back.
Okay, okay, you call back, Mayor, well, I don't know if you can hear me, okay, never mind, moving on.
Caporilla.
Caporilla building.
Okay, um, so I got, um, I actually got a call from um M A B Holdings. They, which is, this is great, um, they were looking at one forty-five East Market Street, it's the former Caporilla Building. And under contract, they were negotiating a lease for a national retailer to occupy the Caporilla Building.
I've heard this, but do we know who?
I don't care who, as long as it's someone.
I mean, he either was, he either was.
But there are a couple um things that the borough, or the, he, there, he's requesting um in order for, you know, him to get this deal.
Okay.
One, the outside area for garbage that is clean and neat, so there's no outside area right now established for the garbage. So he was looking at um this little area here in the back by North Plaza Drive on the corner there. It's where the malls are, he was wondering if he could, and maybe Mark Remy can help us out on this, could he buy it, that part, or lease that part, or even off, get authorization to utilize that part to put up a fence and make it look, um to, to, to use for the garbage, for the garbage, to, to contain the garbage there.
Just to. Just to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um.
Is there no place in the, in like, in the very back of that building?
I mean, what did Caporilla do?
That he could do, they just set it outside.
Yeah, that'd be my question.
Yeah. Yeah, they just set.
I mean, it's set it right there in the middle, you know what I mean, is there a place, just right behind the building that he could construct something?
So just by the banks around the outside dumpster.
There is a cut off there.
Sidewalk scenario.
Did I, I thought that there was, where you come out of that.
Yeah, it could be a dumpster or something, I don't.
Walkway, I thought there was a little cut out of the building there.
It's like, wow, I don't know.
Is that the only thing?
No, there's three things, but he, he needs to know, because they wanna do within thirty, thirty days to, to get it.
Right.
I wish he was here.
Yeah, I. Well, what was number two?
Uh number two is designated parking in the municipal lot. Now, um that doesn't mean that they're, we would like to request thirty parking spaces in municipal lot, but that's, we would, you know, he would, it would be contingent on the parking authority.
Okay.
Um and what the payment would be, uh they'd have to establish a fee.
Okay.
But um we, that would be the other one, and then there's one more stipulation. They would like to see about adopting possibly the mall area to beautify the area. He wants to upgrade the lighting in the mall area, because it's very dark, dark, yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And with LEDs, um he would like to paint it and put additional planters in there. He said they would maintain the planters, they don't have a problem and keep it clean, he doesn't wanna take it over, he just wants to make it better.
I don't, see, something like that to me is really good, but at the same time, by painting, I mean, you know, in my opinion, it would still kinda have to be uniform to the rest of the area, I mean, we wouldn't want it to be the rest of the paint.
Well, it's not like we have a, well, yeah, I mean, that's, right, I mean, but there's not, there's a color scheme downtown.
Well, yeah, but.
I think when he thinks he painted, he painted silver again, you know, to, to cover up the rust spots or whatever.
Yeah.
I think at one point, there was like, some of them might have been maroon or something, um but, I, I mean, personally, I think that anytime we can get someone to invest some time and money into our downtown area,
I agree.
that is a bonus and kudos to those, that individual, so I, I mean, I think that we need to do whatever we can to cooperate. And, and you said it's M A B Holdings?
M A B Holdings, uh.
That's, uh, uh, to make that happen. Uh, I mean, I only have questions about the trash, and if, if there's any other possible place we could do that instead of right there at the end of that mall area, cause that kinda sticks out like a sore thumb in my mind, but, I mean.
Yeah.
There's.
I, I agree with Venus, I think, you know, they're willing to adopt the mall area and, you know, trying to make it look nice where the trash is going to be, that's the kinda person we want downtown, right?
Right.
And if it is at the end of the mall area, I understand what you're saying.
It's not the end of the world.
I understand what you're saying about the trash kinda being out there like a sore thumb, but my guess is, but you know, based on these, well, the other issue here.
It would bide in.
Yeah, he's gonna, you know, they're gonna make it.
Yeah, I would think so too.
And it would be at the corner, cause it's like a T, so it would be out of the public eye, cause you know, it would be out by the bus drive.
Right. Okay, okay.
It's not gonna be on East Market Street, so people would say, it would be out towards the back end area.
Right, right. Right.
But now, um, uh, Mark, would you, they need to, what would the best option there be? Of like leasing it or allowing them to use it, or how do you think, well, not, I wasn't sure how that worked?
So I mean, the borough has a solid waste ordinance that says what all the pre-collection practices are supposed to be. Are they asking for a waiver of that, or what are, what exactly do they want?
Just a place.
They, yeah, they just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Diane, okay, um, they just want to, um, place to put the garbage in the back there, and they said they were willing to buy it, which I don't think that we wanna do that, but, or lease it, or just even authorization to utilize it. Um and so that they can keep it contained from the public.
He wants to build something, correct? Construct something for it to be there.
Yes, oh yeah, like a fence around it and stuff to, yes, yeah.
Right.
I, I mean, I would say, give us a sketch or something, so we know what you're talking about, and, and maybe we can do it. Um, it's certainly possible, is it, is it on the authority's property or the borough's property?
The boroughs.
It's in the malls, so wouldn't that be the borough's properly?
I don't know who, who owns the mall, whether it's the authority or the borough.
Well, I, I know we maintain the malls.
And we, it's us.
Um, but I, I thought it was thus, but I'm.
We put the signs up of no trespassing and, and all that, I'm pretty sure it's us.
The authority has helped the borough with.
The parking authority, yeah.
Yeah, with improvements or whatever, but you own.
Right. Yeah, this isn't, yeah, it's not, yeah.
For me, all.
So that's something that we just have to kinda figure out the details, I mean, it's doable, we just need to know exactly what they want, what they propose.
So, so maybe they propose a sketch to law and, you know, we have a discussion in law and order, it's, but, hey, with.
Are we all, are, is everybody in agreement that this is a good thing?
Yeah.
One hundred percent.
Okay, so I guess the, the, you know, all we need, I would say all we need from them, like Mark's saying, is can you get us a sketch of exactly what you wanna do?
The details.
And, you know, we can make the rest happen.
Yeah, the word, I, I, I think it's safe to say that we're definitely on board, we just need to understand the details a little better, and we were gonna have to hash out the parking space.
And I think, Mark hasn't seen this sketch, has he? Mark, have you seen what they wanna do?
No.
No, they just.
Okay, so, I mean, if you can forward it to Mark, and then maybe Mark can get a better understanding of exactly where they want to be, and then, you know, do we need to lease it to them, just let them use it, whatever, um.
But I agree, I mean, whatever we need to do.
Whatever we can do to get someone downtown, and I think that's even more imperative now
I think we should jump to do.
in our situation, you know, with people out of jobs and not working, let's, let's get it.
What's going in that building?
We don't know, a national retailer.
Oh. I mean, I guess to some extent, we would have to know what kind of garbage they would be producing. I mean, my recollection is Caporilla basically.
Set their stuff outside.
It's an office down there. Cardboard and plastic, right, that's about. Yeah, that's, that's all I've remembered.
Furniture, they would have furniture sitting out there at times.
Yeah, I mean, I guess that is a good question, though, are we talking of a dumpster, two dumpsters, industrial sized cans?
Uh, there's a whole question.
And, 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 and.
Yeah, we can go back to him with.
Okay, now, um, he does have the timeframe wanted.
Right.
So, um.
Thirty days, right, when's thirty days up?
Well, this was, we just talked about it today.
When did he send the email?
May, May, we talked about it on May the eleventh.
Okay.
So, what is the thirty day timeframe from that?
Well, just.
June tenth.
June tenth, right.
I, I would say his answer is yes, we just were willing to work out the details.
We just need details, yep.
I, I, I think that's safe to say.
And that's, our, our next council meeting is the eighth, so if we need to approve anything by the tenth, we have time to do that at the eighth.
Okay.
And if it's a national retailer, they're, they're real estate people, and they're staying, have municipal budgets work, but they have to, you know, wait till immediately.
Right.
I, I, I don't think it should be a major problem.
And hopefully by that, um, if everything picks up and they can actually come in and, and discuss it in more detail.
Right. So, yeah. Okay.
And then the next thing, um, I would like to inform the Borough Council that I'm resigning from the Municipal Authority Board uh effective immediately. I, the reason is, I feel that I can serve the borough of Lewiston more efficiently with my Borough Manager, Secretary, Treasurer, and Finance Manager position here. Um and I just, I, in my letter, I, I said thanks to all those who put confidence in me, um, I appreciate it. But um I did wanna let the board know that.
Thank you, Diana. Is that enough for you? Mayor, are you there?
She never called back, I don't think.
Okay. Well, then, we'll have to move on, um.
Maybe she's caller number six, do you want me to try it?
Try it, go ahead, I like this roulette game.
Are you, Deb, is that you?
Hello?
Yay, we're up, we're up to you, Deb. Yay, we're up, we're up to you, Deb.
Oh my words, I don't have so much to say.
Well, maybe we'll have to mute you again.
Can I go back to something you guys talked about about an hour ago?
Sure.
The one, the one about the, uh, detour on Kiss Street.
Okay. That's number four.
Because of the Jack Street Bridge.
Uh huh.
Detour. Is there any way that, um, the end of Kiss Street could be fixed? Uh, when they paved Kiss, Kiss Street, uh, there on Charles, I mean, there's a great big hole there, and it's all messed up, and to have that extra traffic going down there.
Where are you talking about, Deb?
At the end of Kiss Street, going towards Charles, because they're gonna use Kiss Street as the detour. And they did the Jack Street Bridge.
Okay, are you at the red light?
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
They paved, well, they paved Kiss Street instead of paving, uh, like, that whole area right there going into Charles Street. They left that, there's a space there, probably, what's the whole length of the street, but it, uh, width-wise.
You're talking about the intersection?
There's just probably maybe, uh, I don't know, probably sixty. Whereas there's a lot of damage done to that, that road right there.
We'll have, we'll have the streets crew go look at it.
And I don't know if they would, if they would agree to patch that up, you know, because they have all that extra traffic going there. That would probably cause a problem.
Okay, thanks, we can have Tim go check it, or the streets crew go check it out and maybe make that recommendation.
Okay, all right, thanks, it's just a suggestion.
Yep, I appreciate suggestions.
And I had another question about the pool, uh, opening, what do you do for lifeguards?
Well, we have some applications.
What?
We don't know, Deb, we've never ventured into anything like this before. We could hope that maybe someone would apply, or be able to do it. There's a lot of what-ifs in this situation.
Yeah, not to wait that late, you know, to try to hire lifeguards, uh, at that point.
I mean, we, we can't hire lifeguards now because we have people laid off.
We don't now.
Right.
Yeah, we can't, that's correct, yes, yeah, because we have to bring everybody back before we can do any hiring, based upon the new minimums.
True. Not that I don't want the pool, I definitely want the pool open, don't get me wrong, definitely want it open. But, um, I, I was just a little concerned about how we'd get the lifeguards, but, yeah, I guess we'll deal with that when it comes, so.
You know, the other thing about that Kiss Street detour, and I agree with you about fixing the road, that might be great, but.
Yeah.
The reality of that detour is that, if, no matter what the signs say about, you know, take Kiss Street as a detour, or continue the whole way down and then come around, everybody that's from the area, that's who's coming down there, and they know to go down Kiss Street.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, Pendot, Pendot does it the way, without our approval, they do it the way that they are gonna do it. It doesn't kind of change anything, everybody that's coming to that intersection knows to take Kiss Street and cut off, you know, cut off the corner there, so.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Mayor?
Well, I have, it, it's just time for my report.
It is time for your report.
We can pull them out after her.
Okay, uh, a couple weeks ago, and I was, so probably news to be know about this, um, there was some damage done to trees out in front of the old Bon Ton Building.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, as it was, it was something that was turned over to our police department for investigation. And when, uh, it was investigated, uh, we found out that, uh, it was partially because of the error on our part, the borough's part. And, uh, the planning is going to have raised, uh, they had raised man's guess, they can come down and give an estimate. Initially, it was going to be like thirty-six hundred dollars. But, um, they came out and said what they would do would be to renew the, the trees that are damaged and, uh, plant new trees. And that would be the three trees that were damaged. And the total is, uh, fourteen hundred ninety-six dollars and ninety-five cents.
How much, Deb?
Fourteen ninety-six eighty-one.
Fourteen, yeah, fourteen ninety-six ninety-five. And that would be for all three trees.
And you think, you think that fifteen hundred, that.
I think you should.
We will have to at this point, we have to discuss the rest of the matter in executive session.
Are you, are you doing what you're gonna say with the error wide, but we can just cut the tax?
Yeah, we will.
Okay, I didn't know if that was something that we would have to pass through, I was just waiting, you know, before I told you all this, you know.
That's okay.
I don't know if that was qualified for executive session.
Just the other half of it does, that's all, Deb.
Okay, oh, okay. I bet you wish I was still muted, don't you?
Oh, we can do that.
I can change that, Mayor, for you.
I can tell you do.
Is that, is, do you have anything else, Mayor?
Uh, not from my report, but I'm going to do the state report also, state state report.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay, um, because of the, uh, the virus on the number of, uh, incident head drops some, uh, during the latter part of March and, and April, part of April. But now we're seeing, uh, an increase in domestic, uh, drug overdoses and mental health calls. I, I think it's a combination of, of everything that's going on, plus the warmer weather. So, uh, there definitely is, uh, an uprising on that. Um, we have, uh, also found out that methamphetamine is back in the area. And, uh, I don't know if you know anything about the effects of that, but, uh, it's a very uncontrollable type situation when someone takes, uh.
Yes.
Takes meth.
Meth.
Methamphetamine, it's, it's back in the area, it had gone, yeah, it had gone away some. Uh, and now it's back, the last couple weeks, uh, we've had evidence of it and a couple, uh, actually, uh, a couple people were brought in, and, and they're very, very, um, they're very hard to control, the, the people when they're on that. So, uh, yeah, I'm really concerned about our officers, so hopefully we can get another handle on this and, um, so I wanted to bring that to your attention. Uh, the reservoir lane situation, uh, our officers have been up there, uh, they've done twelve stationary patrols, uh, since the fourteenth of April. And, um, there have been no violations. And it's, it's awfully hard for even a stationary patrol to, to enforce the speed because of the stop sign way it is in a short distance. You know, between, between the entrance and the stop sign.
Right.
But, uh, they, they have been setting up there, I don't know if anybody has seen them up there, but, and they have been logging up. Uh, when the officers go up, they log the date and the time that they were there. So that's, that's available if anybody needs to see that. But, uh, there have been no violations, I don't know if, if, um, if the gentleman has been complaining lately, has anybody heard?
Yes, he has stated that there has been one patrol that he has seen there since the last meeting when this was discussed, uh, and placed in the Sentinel, so.
Same with my nephew's, they've, uh, their parents.
Now, there was actually, I, it was twelve, twelve since, uh, the fourteenth of April.
Oh, maybe, maybe you can forward those dates and times to us, Mayor.
What's that?
Maybe we can have those dates and times that they were there to patrol forwarded.
Okay, I can, I can check on that for you.
Thanks.
I know we talked, we talked a while ago about, uh, one of those, um, those indicators signs that are portable that we could use all over the borough, you know.
Right.
I know they're running, uh, money right now is, uh, a little tight, but maybe that's something we could think about in the future.
Absolutely.
Because they can, they're portable, and they're, and when we have situations like this, we could take it there and then.
Right.
Move it on to some states we're having an issue with, so, that might be something we can take a look at. Uh, the service test, uh, that was scheduled on April the twenty-fifth, uh, of course, they have postponed it indefinitely, but we are still accepting applications. So if you know anybody that might be, might be interested, uh, in doing that. Uh, I do have made personnel, uh, something I need to discuss in executive session.
Okay.
I have that. Wanted to mention too, there's been some reporting of, uh, four-wheelers up in the fifth floor playground, if you're aware of that.
Yes.
Uh, our officers have been pulling up there, also spoken to several neighbors and, uh, are making them aware that it's happening, so it keeps us to watch, because we, uh, almost have to catch these people in the act.
Right.
So, uh, we think, we think there's a possibility that it's, uh, coming from a group there on Patrick Street. There again, you know, we have to, we have to actually catch them, so. But, uh, there are many tracks up there, so there's more than one, one, uh, four-wheeler one at a time, so. There, you know, we'll continue to check on that. So the rest I'll, I'll have to do with the executive session.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Nope, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, we need to go back, guys, uh, for, uh, the letter of resignation from Diana. We need to make a motion and officially accept that, so that we have an opening on the board.
I make a motion that we officially accept Ms. Walmer's resignation from the Municipal Authority Board.
I will second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did they say aye?
They said aye.
Okay, great, okay, uh, we don't have anything from Rec Board, they have not met. Is the chief on there, fire chief?
Bob, are you?
Yeah. Bob, do you have anything?
I don't have an item, I have to work for him, fire department did run twenty-seven calls in one of the bay. Also, I had to get coast involved at, uh, two places, I acted for, uh, one sanitary level conditions. Purpose was issued to conduct the faith. Diana has the information of that.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else, Bob?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Mark, Remy, we're up to you.
Uh, just executive session material.
Okay. Okay, so now on to new and unfinished business. We had the Juniata Mifflin Boroughs Association of Elections of P S A B representation by resolution. And we had three people on that?
There's a different one, you're.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, we are voting for a one-year term for, uh, or making a resolution for the one-year term of Polly Dagon as Secretary Treasurer of the Juniata Mifflin Borough Association, Deb Bargo as President of the Juniata Mifflin Boroughs Association, and Debbie Bargo as Director Representative to the Pennsylvania State Association of Boroughs.
So we might.
So we need to make a motion to allow them to have, look, to give them this position. We just need to pass a resolution.
Yeah, I don't even know the one lady or what that's even about, I don't know.
See, we have, uh, Mifflin and Juniata County has a group that meets as Borough Association, okay, so, yeah, she's from Juniata County. I can't say that I know her, I've met her once, I believe.
She's been, uh, she's been a secretary for years.
Okay, I think I met her at that dinner we had, Mayor.
Why would we vote for somebody that's representing Juniata County?
Because we're a joint, that, these were, can you help me out here, Mayor?
It's okay, it's all right, I, I got it.
And this is a county, county's broad decision, and that's just from Juniata County. Right.
Right. So we just need to pass, are you guys the only ones, or, did you guys have an election, were you able to do that?
No, so we, we had to cancel, so this is how we have to do it, by ballot. So each of the boroughs that are involved in, in the association, uh, are, uh, looking at this at their council meeting this month.
Okay.
Uh, we had to, uh, had to do it in trial rather than a, a regular dinner meeting.
Okay. So ours will just be one of many votes that happens here tonight, or at meetings?
Yes, yes, all the, all the, all the, uh, all the boroughs have to vote on it.
Okay.
All right, I make a motion that we approve the resolution.
I'll second that motion.
And the resolution says this, now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Lewis Town that Deborah Bargo and Polly Dagon are hereby appointed to the Juniata Mifflin Boroughs Association for a one-year term. Ms. Bargo is appointed as President of the Association and Representative to the P S A B, and Ms. Dagon is appointed as Secretary Treasurer. This will be adopted as Resolution Number twenty twenty dash twenty-one this eleventh day of May twenty twenty. So you're all sure of what that would sound like, or look like, if you could see it. So, we had a first and a second, we have any discussion?
Hello?
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who made the motion, too?
I did.
I'm sorry.
They did, I, I made the second.
Thank you.
Opposed? Okay.
Do we need to maybe do executive session before we do that, so that the rest are all more, more, more aware? Uh, I would say that.
They, they didn't get to see that, did they? Yeah, um, we're going to go ahead and go into executive session. Uh, is there any public comments before we do that?
Uh, yeah, do you, uh, can you hear me, Alex?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you, Greg.
Yeah, I just, Craig, the authority, I just, uh, Diana, uh, I understand, uh, your feeling on resignation, I was just, uh, wanted to appeal to the council to possibly consider replacing, uh, or filling that vacancy with one of the members that was replaced there the last year and a half, and, and, uh, I would, I would just ask if that would be considered.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll break for executive session and be back.